Bring the Conquer Kyle Regional School Committee meeting to order. Let's do a roll call for attendance. Booth?
Present.
About.
Present.
Cynthia?
Ready here.
Wilson?
Here.
Mustafi?
Mustafi here.
Johnston here and I don't know if that Alexa was with us too. Okay, first up would be public comment. If anybody has a comment, you could just raise your hand on Zoom. Be ideal. See anything? We're on one page still.
I don't see any.
So chairs and liaisons on reports. I don't have anything. You've seen what I've seen as far as school committee stuff goes. It's all been right here.
Exactly. Not much since the last three days. I would just say thanks to the community for the kind of feedback and input that we've gotten. We'll get to correspondence in a minute, but thanks for that to all on the planning process for fall. Any liaison report to other committees? Do we have anything from?
I think we'll reference FinCom when we move to correspondence.
Yes, yep.
Which we'll move back to now. I haven't taken another order.
No, that was, oh yeah, you're right. Okay. All right.
Turn it up to that.
Yeah, sure. Yep, I tallied them up. So correspondence, we've had a few more emails even since Monday. We had two more regarding anti-racism. We had eight emails that were either comments or questions regarding the plan to reopen. And we've had, and we had the two emails, basically one to each committee from the finance committee, starting to plan for our FY22 budget. As if we weren't still in the midst of 21 again. But they reached out to us to start to plan the guidelines, discussions in October for the FY22 budget. So we are grateful for that and coordinating with them and we'll start that process pretty soon, actually. I think that was it unless you saw anything else, Wally, that I missed mentioning?
You got it all.
I wonder if I might.
Oh, the one, whoops. Sorry, go ahead, Court.
Yeah, I'd like to spend another minute or two minutes on the anti-racism policy work and curriculum work recommendations that are coming our way. Because the recommendations or the appeal or demands put before the school committee from a number of people now are pretty consistent. And I'd like to just call out that the appeal we're hearing is for a curriculum that embraces more anti-racism subjects, more historical context around origins of racism, the value of an equity audit in the school district, and the examination of inputs and where we're getting information from in terms of students and families that inform us. And that teacher training reflect a need for anti-racism understanding and efficacy. And that generally equity issues around students of color and other marginalized persons and be examined and acted upon. So I just wanted to, I don't want to read the letter, but simply put it on the record that we're hearing this. We know it's an impassioned, thoughtful appeal. And there's a lot of detail to it and it's going to take a lot of careful attention and commitment on our part. And so we know that.
Definitely. I think also pointing out, as Laurie has mentioned, that there's been a lot of collaboration with many of the people or the groups sending this as well. And so it is definitely a joint mission to make a lot of these improvements. And that's something that we're committed to as well.
Thank you.
The only other comment I was going to pull out of those emails I mentioned is that one of them was an offer of help, you know, on things like making masks and shields and that kind of stuff. And we have heard that several times from the community. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and reference that we appreciate those offers so much and will engage when the time is right to coordinate those. So much appreciated and we will certainly take our community up on the willingness to help out here. And I think that was it on correspondence, so.
Yeah, thanks for that. And I do want to make, just make note, we have been very actively involved in cultural competency and attempting to work on issues we know exist for some time. It's always helpful to have input from people and especially recent students, which most of that is. And there's a long way to go here in Eltore. Thank you. Anything else?
As a segue, our, as we move on, our Metco director, Mr. Namichi, was heralded today in the Metco newsletter for his singular efforts around pulling together conversations that are, I believe statewide, that are bringing Metco students and other students of color together for dialogue. That is, in the Metco Inc.'s opinion, a real hallmark of what's possible and a standard setter for what should be happening by way of community dialogue. It just came out today. So thank you, Mr. Namichi.
Yes.
Excellent. So, super.
Thank you. I just had a couple of updates since clearly we'll be doing others as we go through the agenda. Yesterday, I met with the Board of Health officials in town and all of the private school headmasters. So we're just trying to come into all of this reopening of school with a baseline of common common approach, common understanding of the protocols, common understanding of the roles between the Board of Health officials and the schools. Clearly, a community of partnership and collaboration, supporting one another. So that was a really positive meeting. And that's on top of the ongoing conversations I'm having with the Board of Health officials. So that was just a nice, nice discussion with my colleagues and to have a local-based approach that's consistent to whatever extent's appropriate in each of the different environments. So that's one update. I just also wanted to remind you, we are at the finance committee on Tuesday night of next week. I know you mentioned the FY22 memo that we received. We are actually talking with them about FY21 on Tuesday night. So Jared and I will attend that. We do meet Monday, so we'll mention it again next week. But that is immediately going to follow your discussions next week and kind of be in the middle of those as you've got a budget workshop also later in the week. So we're looking forward to talking with them and hearing with what the approach is going to be to try to finalize the budgets as we get closer to town meeting.
You remind the time on that.
Seven o'clock. Pretty sure it's seven o'clock. Yeah.
Good. Early retirement incentive.
Yeah. Do you want me to start? Do you want to?
Yeah, why don't you kick it off and?
Okay, I'll just quickly frame it, especially since we have a couple of new members. In 2017, we were in need of some budget relief. And so we did some work to study different options, creative options outside of the normal budget process. One of those options was to offer an early retirement incentive to staff who had 15 years in the district. And the rationale behind that is they're at the top of the salary schedule. And we benchmarked a master's step seven entry point for their replacements for a delta of an annual savings of over $40,000. The incentive was to be paid out over three years for the total of 40,000. And what it allowed every year was significant savings that compounds as it goes. So if you look at the memo that's attached to the agenda, you can see that over time, we've saved hundreds of thousands of dollars because of the folks who participated in this program. So it was a win in terms of the finances, but equally as important to us was that this was meant to be a positive, positive project in collaboration with the teachers. And those who participated, participated because it felt good to them and it just was successful on both fronts. We had brought it back, I guess, a little over a month ago, probably April-ish, May, to suggest we might revisit this. And as we were rebuilding FY21, thought it could offer some cost savings. We asked the teacher unions to survey their membership and had a moderate, low response for this one. A moderate response, last time we had done it in two phases for one fiscal year and then a deadline a few months out for the secondary fiscal year. And it seemed that there was more interest in the FY22 timeframe than there was in the FY21 timeframe. Well, so as the summer's going on here and we're really getting to the planning process of how we're going to open the schools, there's also individual plans being made and situations being reflected upon. And people frankly, just really having that struggle of their own health and their family's safety and other variables. So it was suggested that we might look to revisit this. It does sound like there are people who might be interested in partaking immediately. And that would be my recommendation, that it would be at a short-term invitation. We should look at it again for FY22, but that should be part of the FY22 building project process, not something I think we just automatically roll forward. I guess I'll frame all of this also in a really challenging time of managing just all of the pieces of reopening school. Yes, all the work that we did to roll out to you, but just in the regard of individual staff members. We're supporting people, like I said, with medical and family medical, but also childcare needs. And there's a lot of moving pieces right now. So this, I think, could be beneficial to put one more option on the table for those who are eligible to consider. And so I thought we'd bring it back to you for discussion. Again, I'd be suggesting that if we did this, it would be a very immediate process in August with a short turnaround and a one-time event for FY21 that would close. And then we can decide later if FY22 is something we want to look at or not. So that's, we had left it that we'd bring it back for 22. I am bringing it back earlier than I had originally thought. So that's, I think, where we're at. We're, I can't answer more questions. Jared could run all the numbers, but I think you've got them in front of you. That it, in terms of the savings.
Well, and just to summarize and make sure I understand everybody else does, the benefits of doing this are twofold. One is that it lets some teachers step out of this situation where they're uncomfortable anyway, without having to, you know, figure out leave or things like that. And then financially, it means that we are letting them retire, not continuing to pay them, and also not, in some cases, paying leave on top.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying. Yeah.
Yeah, so just to clarify, we would pay them something. We just wouldn't be paying them their salary.
In some cases, yes, depending on their situation.
Yeah. I guess the sort of thing that jumps out first is in assuming we need to replace them. And at late date, I suspect, given what's going on around the state, that replacing is probably feasible.
I believe so, yes. And we're going to replace them. In some cases, we're replacing people either way.
Right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Laurie, when we, when we look at the memo for CPS, for example, we see on 6/30/2029 FTEs participated. Is that accurate?
Yes. So there were two phases last time.
If I might, this all originated in 2017, so it's just still playing out now.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you. Okay. And this would be a one-year and it would impact teachers who have already commenced into fiscal 21 salary receipts, but that would simply be adjusted and would be a simple bookkeeping matter, I assume.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So.
And actually, just clarity, most teachers who get paid through the summer, it's FY20 pay. The FY21 pay starts the first of the school year.
All right, thank you.
So just an initial thought to, in terms of framing, I know we looked at this several months ago and decided not to do it. That was without a pandemic, of course. The reasoning at that point was both level of interest. We didn't have a huge level of interest primarily.
We were in the pandemic, but it was the level of interest for FY21 that made us rethink it. That's changed, which is why I'm bringing that back.
Right, okay. So that has primarily changed. The other factor that we've talked about in the past, and I don't think this is as relevant, but just to put it out there, with a few years, we didn't want to do it necessarily. We decided not to do it again right after we had offered it so that it didn't seem to become a yearly thing, which we have said we certainly don't want to create. So my initial take is that those concerns, both on interest and making it a, what seemed like a yearly process, are not concerns right now. Because there now is interest and it wouldn't be, have been yearly. We've skipped years already. So my only question would be, are there any other downsides we're not discussing yet? Because otherwise, it seems like a pretty good idea.
I don't, I don't see immediate downsides. I think the concern over the yearly piece, I do know there was interest in 22, so I don't know how that'll play out. But I honestly, I'm so in the moment here, I don't know that that would be my biggest concern. We can tackle that in the coming months as we go forward.
We can. And I would also say, we're in a pandemic, so nothing gets
Yeah.
automatically a yearly thing, if you.
Right, yeah, yeah.
To your question, Heather, I think normally we might hear the concern, why didn't you tell us earlier? But in fact, we did. And so this is a renewed attempt. I think the conversation today, assuming that we are very favorably inclined, and this is another way of supporting teachers, the way they would want to be supported right now. The question might be, what is the responsible incentive figure to put in front of teachers? I know that, what, three years ago, we had a $40,000 number. That was a bit more generous than most comparable school districts were providing when they were putting together similar offerings. Do you have a recommendation there, Laurie? Or do you want to push that our way?
I think I mostly let you dialogue on that. I would just, you know, give you the history of where that number came from. It really was a result of doing the math. And partly the reason that number's high is because our whole salary schedule tends to run higher than most other districts. So we can, we can bring in a teacher with less experience and still save money, even with that kind of an incentive attached. So some of it's just the relativity to our salary scale, which is why we landed there. But I think that is up for some, you know, that's for your dialogue here today, if you want to revisit that. I just wanted, for simplicity, I brought you what we've done in the past.
And, and I think this wouldn't influence my decision ultimately, but I think we ought to pause for a moment and note that this could incentivize some of our best and brightest. And we cherish our best and brightest.
I guess the one thing I would say, yes, that could be true, but given the medical things that I am aware of, that's the case anyway. So, and a number of them are going to be eligible for very extensive sick leave. And I worry financially a bit on that side of it. So and I'm not, you know, I'm not begrudging that, make sure I say that out loud, but just trying to strategize the finances while we meet the needs of the people is, is part of the goal.
So I would offer up my opinion, and that is that this is a responsible and necessary move on our part.
Laurie, can I just ask if, have we looked at numbers that other districts are proposing right now in this current situation of the pandemic and budgetary limitations? I've looked at a few schools and the number is not 40,000. What is the percentage of that incentive? How does, what is the percentage of this incentive, the way it would relate to the earnings of the salary of the teachers? Is it 10%, 8%, 5%, 2%? What's, what's the?
I don't know if I would try to do the math off the top of my head. They're paid out in installments over three years, so each year they get about $13,000, which is partly how the budget pays that out. But we save more than that every year, so we come out in the positive. The average high end of the salary schedule is about 116,000, I'd say. And the salary of the person we would look to replace them with would be 75, 76,000.
So I've seen, from the short research I've been doing, districts, retirement incentives. I've seen some districts proposing 8% on that, on that higher end, if they were offering incentives, 8% of the salary. And so that would, would that be, most of the teachers would be in that 170 landscape there or?
So these are all teachers at the top of the scale. So this number, again, I don't have all the numbers and I don't want to be doing the numbers one, trying to speak with you at the same time. Again, this number was a result over three years, almost three years ago, of the work we did to look at the differential of savings. And because the salary numbers are so, you know, generous, that the savings is generous also. So it is, it is higher than other districts. I will not at all couch that.
I'm going to cover it about 11%. 10 to 11. I think I'd look at it a little differently. The kind of conversation about the number relative to salary and relative to other districts is a very good one to have for 22. I think, given what we're trying to accomplish with this right now, both with the speed with which it would take place and the reason for doing it, the benefit to us is actually going to be a little greater than it is in the, in the normal circumstance. I would hesitate to adjust downward the dollar amount over what our, what this most recent historical early retirement incentive was. I think we, I think we could hurt our prospects if we did that. I don't really see it. I don't see it. I don't see a strong reason to do that. We had the same sort of discrepancy in our last projections and decided to go with these numbers. And like I said, this is not strictly about saving, you know, a certain amount of money on the budget work. This is likely going to happen anyway. So it's, in fact, could be a significant improvement for us. I don't know if that, I don't want to get too detailed into that for some obvious reasons. But I do think it's, I do think it's important that if there are people who find this attractive, that we, we try to exercise it.
Wally, if we had the benefit of time, which we don't, I would want exercises like looking at 40,000 over a four-year payout and probably a couple of other permutations. But I'm with you. Now's not the time.
Yeah, and you might do that for 22. And I do think it, I do think it makes total sense to wait on a 22 incentive because you'll have a lot more information by the time you're considering that in the late fall, early winter.
So I know chairs want to close this conversation properly. I don't want to preempt it. But what happens from here if, if we are to move ahead? Do we make it formal on Monday, Wally and Heather?
Yeah, I think that would be the right approach unless somebody firstly felt they needed more time to consider it.
Plan for a vote Monday.
Yeah, because we want to get this underway for obvious reasons.
And I fully support this program. Laurie, do you anticipate a sometime in August deadline? Or is this, you're going to?
Oh, definitely.
You're not going to just keep it open?
No. It might be a quickest turnaround program you've ever seen. A couple of days, a week to, that's to be expected in this environment.
So we meet on the third? The seventh looks like a good day.
Right.
So to that point, sometimes these programs don't take because there's a minimum threshold a district wants to arrive at before they launch a program like this. Are we concerned at all about the opposite, that we should cap this in some way?
I am not right now because I did the time with the CTA and CCTA before I would bring it to you. They've, the CTA's done a soft survey and seemed like it was three to five people interested. CTA, it may be less than that. So I don't think we're going to get overwhelmed.
So if those numbers doubled, it wouldn't dismay us or throw us into financial upheaval?
No.
Yeah, or personnel upheaval. Okay, thank you.
We're already in some personnel. So I don't, I don't need to, hopefully it's going to just be one person at a time we settle it. But there, every district right now, with all these unknowns and moving pieces, it's really a lot to, stable, stable for the open of school, we will be, I'm sure.
I wish upheaval was something that we were avoiding right now.
Yeah. It'll be, it'll be fine. I think this just gives us another tool in the toolkit here, which is helpful.
So between now and Monday, if anybody has any other questions, just reach out to either Wally or me or Laurie and, and we'll plan to wrap this up on Monday. Okay, good.
Okay, so Cynthia can chime in along the way here. We met again yesterday with the calendar committee. It just formed based on the contractual representation. So we were reflecting on the commissioner's directive that we could consider 170 school days instead of 180. So we went back to what we had brought to you earlier in the week and did some, a lot of really great conversation and some creative thinking. Came up with a kind of a, I feel like it's a very comfortable approach. I feel like it's a very comfortable approach, it gives us time on the one end for onboarding staff and all the training and protocols we need to do with them. And then it brings kids back in a, in a little bit of a virtual way first, and then builds to the in-person over a few days' time. So I will just do a quick overview of what we had suggested. We would be looking at professional days, oh, let me, let me back all this up by saying we really only looked at September and October, with a little bit of high-level look for the rest of the year. The committee felt that to try to, try to really look at where other days are gonna fall with so much uncertainty and wanted to get the year up and running and be sure we had a little more information to work with, so the committee will need to reconvene in, in September to talk on what we think November beyond. I think the high level would be committing to the vacations, maintaining themselves, and an end-of-school date of June sixteenth. We know with the ten-day reduction, that's really comfortable. And indeed, the commissioner finally said, what I've been saying to you is snow days are not, snow days are gonna be virtual days going forward, so that, you know, that really solidifies the end of the year. So we really focused in on the startup of school and some thought about what October might be benefit, what, what might benefit us in October. So September, August twenty-seventh through September third, we'd be onboarding staff and doing training and protocols and professional development. On Tuesday, September eighth, students would receive a virtual school day that would include getting to know you, orientations of especially the transition grades, welcome back, they'd certainly Zoom with their each class likely and get to see each other that way. We actually liked that idea in many ways because it builds whole-class feeling to start the year in the middle and high school, where those kids won't physically be together for any foreseeable time. Wednesday, the ninth, if we assumed it would be an early release half-day, as we proposed earlier this week, that all Wednesdays would be, we would bring K to five in for the half-day, and have six through twelve have a virtual day, and part of the thinking there with the hybrid schedule to start six through twelve on a half-day Wednesday is not a great start, so it made sense to get, do a little more virtual with them on Wednesday, and then start the rotation on Thursday. And then everyone's in, beginning with the hybrid schedules as they are outlined on Thursday, the tenth. So we haven't used all ten of the days, which gives us more flexibility going forward during the year, which the committee thought was very beneficial. We did suggest a professional day on October thirteenth to be attached to the three-day weekend, which is not in your memo, but I would like to ask you to consider renaming that at the committee's recommendation to Indigenous Peoples' Day, and we will list it that way on the calendar. So that's what the committee's bringing to you, that with the big-picture view of expecting other things to stay stable in terms of vacations and end-of-school date, and a plan to return to the calendar in early September, and a reminder of the Wednesday half-days. So it's gonna be a work in progress that I think fits the fact that everything is a bit of a work in progress, but I think it sets a nice ramp up to the year and give us a chance to do everything we need to do with teachers before we're live with kids.
Our thanks to the committee for this. Laurie, the hundred and seventy days refers to student learning, the teacher days remain one-eight-five, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So in terms of the one seventy, if I'm counting correctly, since they only compared to what it used to be, the kids would have started the thirty-first, that week that is now professional development, the thirty-first through the third, I'm jumping between screens here, calendars and documents, is four days of extra professional development, and then the one extra in October. So am I correct that so far this schedule uses five of the ten extra days we have, and we have five left to work with still?
Well, so typically, we actually have five already, because the teachers work a hundred and eighty-five days out of a hundred and eighty.
Right.
So we actually now have fifteen to work with.
Total.
Follow, yeah, so.
That would count it as of the twenty-seventh.
So, right, so you're, you'd have the twenty-seventh through the third, so all of those days, the thirteenth, and then you'd still have all of the remaining to follow. So it's actually more than that.
Okay, got it. So it's six in August, September, and then one in October, seven, and then, so we actually have then eight to work with still.
Yes, and some of those are the typical conference days we're gonna look at, and there's always a PD day in January for the upper grades, so all of those normal things will be part of the discussion. So those will equal, usually those are three days in and of themselves, and then we'll look at how we spread the other remaining ones.
Okay, so we have, of the extras, we basically do have five left, extras to work with, got it, okay, good, thank you.
And the thinking was that now that we have some dates regarding the start date, we need, especially CCHS administration to go back and set up their calendar, so we know the semester end and the quarter ends and exams and all those sorts of things. Then we could drop in at least the high school, have a better idea about how to set up the conference days, et cetera. And even at K eight, they still wanna go back and sort of strategize and where to put the conference days, so.
That makes sense. I'll just say, I know this would be your plan anyway, but I'm gonna say it out loud, that parents will need good notice in order to plan for those professional days when the kids are not only not in school, that can happen a lot, but not doing remote, so. I know you'll do that anyway, but just saying out loud that we want to make sure we give parents as much notice as possible as we schedule those.
Yeah, and I, I will say that comes with all these other moving pieces that, you know, in this year, notice is just a different sense to it than what we would normally have, and unfortunately, that's just where we are, where we are.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, in my opinion, I think I said this to the committee, I would rather kind of go slow and set out a calendar that continues to change again and again, 'cause then they probably have settled and we're undoing stuff, and it, this will, we will roll this out saying this is September and October.
So far.
Remember, we will do November, December, and as far out as we possibly can.
Makes sense.
Can I ask a quick question on the calendar? I've been getting a lot of questions, and I just don't know how to answer it. What was the sort of thinking behind the half-day Wednesdays? I just don't know sort of the background.
We, we know we're going to need, let me start with the elementaries have always had that, it's just been on Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm talking sixth through twelve.
Yeah, because of the hybrid split, because it's Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday. So doing it in the middle of the week keeps everything nice and balanced, and teachers have been working.
No, I, in the half-day period, why the?
That's for time for teachers, because we are starting everything in a new way. We know we're gonna need to continually have department meetings and team meetings of teams of teachers. Training, technology training, social emotional training, cultural competency and anti-racism is on that list. And it's, everything's new, so, yeah. Now, I'm glad you asked, we can clarify that when we send this out, so. The only big change is for the high school, the middle and elementary have always had a day a week with a less than full schedule, so.
Nearly enough, you know, just.
Yeah, it's gonna get full quickly, yes.
I wouldn't be surprised if the kids find it beneficial to. Especially the ones that would have had three full days of remote learning on that week. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'll just clarify, Wally, the high school kids will have remote learning asynchronous, but they will have remote learning on Wednesday afternoons, or we will not make the time and learning requirement from this state.
Sorry to have taken.
Yeah, that's why I clarified.
And, oh, and that's just, just at the high school?
Um, I, no, that isn't just at the high school, it's the nine-nine, the nine-ninety that's now down to nine-thirty-five, I think, is a, a number we need at the high school. The others, we don't need it for time on learning, we're still working through those schedules. But it does look like the others might even have some synchronous things, so we're still sorting it all out. What we needed was the teachers available half the day for professional developments, we're still working on the student side of it.
So from a student's perspective, it won't always be a half Wednesday?
Probably not.
Okay, that's good, I think that's something we should clarify in our outward communications, because I think.
But the afternoon will be remote engagement, not in.
Right.
Okay.
So that's good, I'll put all that in the communication when we share the change.
Good, that's helpful, that's great.
Yep, yep.
Again, we'll vote on this on Monday. Assume these two things are on the, the posted agenda.
Well, I had this dilemma of having to post before we had this meeting, I think the calendar is, we'll be sure the retirement's incentive gets added. Erin's on this meeting, so she's probably already doing it while we talk.
Good, good. Which would put us under the window anyway, and we're just heading, so that's okay. As long as everybody hears, okay. So, so we're finished with that discussion? Yes, okay. Let's move on to reopening plans.
Yeah, I thought, I think the intent of this agenda is really for, mostly for you to all dialogue and ask questions, just a few highlights from our end. Again, reminder of the purpose of what we've proposed is that it's trying to really strike the balance between maximizing in-person learning while achieving safety measures and protocols that, through all the committee work, we deemed necessary. Trying to also balance the time in school, the time out of school, in a way that didn't allow for big gaps of time for kids to be away from the school building and live instruction. At the elementary level, we really focused on bringing all kids in five days a week because of the challenges of remote learning. I know there's been questions about the half-day there as well, so I'll just, you know, give a little more of that rationale more clearly. To be able to cohort the elementary kids is what's really allowing the, all of them to come back, rather than going to the hybrid alternating mode. However, by bringing them all back, when you then start to look at the more complicated settings of lunch, recess as we don't know it at all, or certainly as we used to know it, on the specialists when they're, even if the specialists are coming to them, which we debated, there's big differences in who's exposed to each other, it starts to shift the cohort feeling considerably. So all of that added up to essentially not meeting the safety mandates we were setting for ourselves. So we essentially got to two choices, we could either go the hybrid split day with the elementary, and they had full days of remote learning, or we could bring them all in and do the early release every day. So we've recommended the half-day early release because every student's in school every day, and that felt most beneficial for the kids, built some really nice routines, hopefully for the youngest students, and set a really predictable plan for families knowing, knowing that no matter what we did, we were creating a childcare issue, but hopefully the most stable was managing the afternoon piece. So that's a little background on that that I know has come up. The one other thing that I know we've all had feedback on, and I think some feedback's gone to you as well, is the question of the alphabetical split at the high school, and, you know, the challenge of kids not being with friends. And that's just a consistent piece we've heard from the kids directly, we're hearing from their families. It was on Mr. Mestulo's task force this morning, and we talked some on it. He's considering some options to see if we can even do some data gathering, to see what other things we can come up with. But we do know that structure is the best structure for all the safety measures we need to achieve. I guess I might as well explain this too while I'm explaining things. If you bring them in by grade level, which is what seem, you know, of course you have more of your friends in your grade level, you bring them in by grade level, the natural split in the class size that we get when we go alphabetical disappears. So then you've got a group of ninth graders in English who are all at school, and now we're then taking half of them and having to remotely teach them in the building, or put a tutor with them while they're teachers with the other half. Definitely not exactly what we would have envisioned for academics, and then the trick there is if you've got like nine-ten in the building, our plans and hopes for some zooming in evaporate because the eleventh and twelfth graders don't have any classes going on to zoom into. So it just doesn't work the same way, and we had also hoped to keep families together, and the only way to do that is alphabetically, so. We are still seeing what we can come up with, committing to alternative and creative options where kids can be together. We know it's, it's definitely a pressure point for the kids, and we're glad they felt comfortable saying that, and I have talked to all the local, just talked to all the local districts around us, hoping somebody else had figured out another way, and everybody's gone alphabetical, so. So I'm just gonna open with those pieces that seemed like they were the two biggest pieces of feedback, I have had a lot of positives too, so I shouldn't forget to add that. And then turn the conversation over to you.
Just as far as framing this goes a little, obviously, we haven't had a lot of time since this was presented to us on Monday, but we would like to vote it on Monday. And so if there are things that you have been either would like more information about, have been wondering about, or might have issue with, I think it would be beneficial to us to treat this as if we were, you know, we had made a motion and we were now discussing prior to voting. We'll do that again Monday, for sure, but let's surface anything that might be on your minds now, so that if there is anything that we feel needs to be adjusted prior to, we've got a little time, very little, to do something about it prior to us, hoping to take a vote on Monday.
Wally, I, I thank you, I could offer up a, a couple of comments. One is, I don't think anybody's happy, but I don't think that was the goal either. We knew this was gonna be a very painful balance of needs and issues. My early read is that what the superintendent shared on Monday shocked nobody. And that's good news, that's good news. And then finally, what I'd say is that there has been a, a hope, sort of a latent hope on the part of some people in the district and expressed by a few. We've got such an exceptional, exceptional school district and such talented folks leading it and teaching in our classrooms, can't we leverage all our, our innovative talents and our creative capacities and do something different? And sadly, I think the answer is no, because every school district's Congress Carlyle and, and others are dealing with the same external realities. So as much as we'd like to say that we've got something novel, no pun intended, that would be a very bad pun. We simply don't, because our realities are so similar to, to that that everybody else is experiencing.
Any else good to comment, questions?
So I don't, I don't see this as voting for the plan, because this is, as Laurie says, it's a roadmap, it's a general set of, we're gonna try to do these things, these three different options, and this, these ways. And I know that a lot of things are gonna change as we get more information. Not, you know, change in a big way, but I think the very details about how we're gonna do, bring back the hybrid model or the remote model, or I don't, as we've discussed, we don't think it's possible to bring everybody back at six through twelve. So, I don't. So, um, I don't perceive my vote as, this is, we're locking into this plan. We're, we're locking into an approach which is going to change, um, as it should. And, uh, so I appreciate all the work and all the level, the, uh, level detail that's gone into this. And I think it's, uh, something that's going to require a lot more work going forward. So, thank you.
Thanks.
I also wanted to comment on the, on the plan. Um, I appreciate, uh, the thoughtfulness and all the heavy lifting in, in this planning process. You can't make, and you can't meet everybody's needs, unfortunately. Uh, there is no good, uh, there is no great plan. There's no good plan. There is a plan, um, that is feasible, um, when it comes to, uh, ensuring everybody's safety and, um, providing, uh, the education for, for our students the best we can. And that's, that's social emotional peace. Uh, just wanted to, um, uh, say that, um, uh, that day, um, the, the virtual day, uh, that, uh, the high school teachers will be speaking to our students and families, um, about, um, return to school is such a great idea. I, I, when I saw that, um, uh, uh, when I saw that on this, on the schedule, I, I was really happy to see that because, um, I, I've seen the impact of those, uh, virtual webinars that, um, personally, when we were going through, um, the, the college visits, um, it is, it brings some normalcy and some understanding of what to expect, which, um, we can all expect that anxieties are high and, and students are really interested in knowing, um, where they're going and, uh, what is going to happen to them. And, and the parents are, uh, on the same boat with them. So I really appreciate all the great ideas that are, uh, being put forward, uh, by the, uh, school administration and, and, um, and, um, yep, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
I think I've heard a lot of great feedback about how detailed and thought out and, um, you know, while it's not what everybody wants, it's, um, it, it gets, it gets us somewhere that, um, that people feel they know where they're going, which I think is a really good position to be in. Are there any, like, known unknowns at this point for the, that, that could change anything between now and, and Monday? I know that there's all sorts of stuff that's always changing and we kind of know what we know is always going to change, but is there, are there any concerns that you have, Lori, about, um, some piece that's not quite exactly where, where it should be to make this?
You know, the, we've already this week made a very significant shift into the next layer of detail, which has actually felt really good. So we're really pinning down the sched, the details of the schedules for all the levels, um, honing in on travel and how kids are going to switch classes. Like, we're getting into the next layer, which actually feels really good. And so long as the schedules, I, I've been on the meetings all day continuing that progress. I think we're in a good place to finish that up by next week because really, you know, each piece, we had to build the big picture structure, which is what went out. Now we're building the next layer of structure and then there's this other layer that follows that. So I think we're, we're doing, do, we're doing well. Um, I have to, this, the timeline we laid out has been completely on track all summer long. So barring something that we haven't spotted yet and just continuing the pace at which we've been, which is somewhat of a challenge, no doubt, but I think we're going to be in good shape. I do think the, the little gift of some time there at the end of August probably helps avoid anything getting left to rush because we'll have a window there to wrap it up and then roll it out to teachers. So I don't see anything right now, but I say that was such a great sense of it could change in, you know, an hour is sort of how this has gone. So, but it seems like we're, we're doing well. I've been on a lot of the task forces and staff meetings and talking with the principals on, um, the building level piece is taking off, which is exactly what we planned.
Yeah. Yeah. In terms of supplies, facilities, all that kind of stuff, everything?
We're in good shape. In fact, we're going to open the schools up earlier than we thought to the teachers because that'll help them to get in and start to strategize this new world that they have. Um, we hit one little snag with, um, 90, M9 and 95 masks for PPE and the fire department's taking care of that. So the little, they, you know, I can't say there haven't been some, but we kind of just step back and restrategize it. And this is the gift of such a collective effort. Like today I got an email, Emerson's offered to help with whatever they can help with. Like, the collective piece of this has been really important so that we're all, we have resources to go to and not just trying to do it all by ourselves. So, so far, we are navigating any little hiccups that have come along.
Thanks.
On that same, same, uh, line of thinking, Lori, are we, uh, still awaiting any outside contractor work on facilities?
No. Uh, no. In fact, and Russ is on, he's going to talk more when we get to the CPS stuff later. Uh, we really pulled back any work that we had planned this summer, which was really smart because now we're not at anyone's, um, timeline on those external kind of projects. So the only vendors that are coming in now are on an as-needed basis at our discretion. Well, usually at the middle school, it's not always our discretion. It's because there's a little issue we need them to fix, but otherwise it's at our direction and discretion. So, um, that had, if we had tried to do any projects of any kind, that would have created a much bigger issue. So I'm glad we didn't. Um, so thank you for asking that.
And you're comfortable with, uh, any, uh, testing on air exchange?
Yeah. And Russ, Russ is on, so we could probably ask him. He's, um, secured vendors for us. Russ, are you available there?
Yep. Uh, let me see.
Just give them, I know, we didn't tell you, we're going to ask you about this part. Um, can you just give them the quick version of what you've secured for engineering, for HVAC and, uh, air testing?
Okay. So, good afternoon, everyone. Um, so we've hired a engineering firm, BLW, just to come in and do an assessment of all of our HVAC equipment and just to ensure we're running at a hundred percent and just to offer up any recommendations, um, they can do, uh, or we can do as far as any improvements. Um, we also reached out to, uh, MAB, MABIT Environmental and we're hiring, uh, an industrial hygienist to come in and just, uh, do like a, a risk assessment and just look at some of our, uh, cleaning, uh, processes and, uh, some of our, uh, chemicals that were used and to ensure they're, uh, approved by the CDC. Um, there are also, uh, this industrial hygienist, they can do, uh, swipe samples on high-touch areas that they can test for, uh, COVID-19. They, there is no test out there for air monitoring for COVID-19. We have to tell them or ask them, uh, what we want test for, tested. So I should be meeting with them next week and they can give us some recommendations. So.
All right. Thank you. And we know, we know that you're at Ripley right now.
Yes. Yeah.
Thank, thank you to, uh, your entire crew for their, their, uh, extra attention and, uh, extra work this summer.
Yeah. Um, thank you, Court. Yeah, we've, uh, you know, to Lori's point, I'm glad we didn't take on any extra projects because this has freed me up to get the PPE and the tents and I'm going to be working very closely with this engineering firm and the industrial hygienist. So it'd be odd to be running projects now and doing that, so.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
So Lori, it's not really part of the plan, but, um, especially the elementary schools with so many parents driving their children to school.
Yeah.
Um, I'm, I'm hoping that, uh, the Concord Police Department, I know that the resource officers are, but that's, that's a big, big lift.
Yeah. Yep. So the elementary principals, we're reaching out to them today and pro, and also, uh, DPW's going to come in and be part of the conversation. There's already been some creative brainstormings. I was on the Alcott Task Force yesterday and, um, one of the veteran staff reminded us that there used to be a big, someone here will already know this, but it was news to me, that there was, used to be a big loop around Alcott and could we reinvent some of that different approach rather than the way it's paved right now? So we're starting to strategize it. Um, certain settings are harder than others for sure. Alcott and Thoreau, probably the top of the list, um, just given their name, you know, the settings they're in. So yes, we are definitely getting engaged in that conversation and, um, working through that.
Making people very alert to bikers and walkers and it's, it's going to be a little chaotic at first.
Yes.
There's no question about that. And so just to have everybody, you know, slow things down a bit, no, no need to rush to school.
Correct. That is right. There won't, yeah, tardiness will have another definition than what it did before.
Great. Thank you.
We, we will judge, we will judge their arrival by their intentions.
Yes. That's right. That's right.
Um, so I would just comment, I will also, and I will keep saying, but I think given the, the myriad of factors and how they're changing and the timing and everything, I think it is truly amazing, actually, the way this plan has come together and the fact that we have what feels like a multi-pronged plan that we can use as a guide and shift as we go using it is, is really impressive. So I just want to share my thanks to everyone who is involved. And I know it was incredibly collaborative. Um, so huge kudos here. Um, that my comment in, in question is somewhat has been in a way, um, foreshadowed by a lot of these comments, the fact that there are still things that are not done and will be in the next level, as you said, um, some details yet to flesh out. And as we approve this one, I think it'd be great for us to be able to communicate at some point kind of where those other things stand or when we will hear about them. Um, what I think about in particular in terms of timing is what the remote plan looks like for, for families who opt remote, not when everybody's remote, but for families who opt out of in-person, what that looks like.
Right.
Um, only that they'll need to know a little bit about what it looks like before they make the choice possibly. So I know that's a chicken and egg dilemma there. Um, and, and other things around, um, I know you've been, and so this is also to point out, I know there's work going on on all of this already. You, as you mentioned, talking about, um, scenarios with the headmasters and other school leaders. And I know you're trying to get more feedback on thresholds that would then, um, enable or inform other decisions. You know, the threshold for closing in one direction if we have to, like, ju, just as likely, or, um, likewise thresholds for opening more, um, fully at some point. So all of those, and I know that those are things that you're looking for and, and.
That was a big part of our discussion yesterday with the health officials and all the Concord schools was to start working through that. And we did start to think we could at least put some scenarios out. You know, the more I listen, the more I understand why the, it depends is really the answer. But I know that's not an easy answer for people to understand because it's very non-precise. So, um, we were, we were doing some of the hypotheticals or in case, some cases, some actual things that had happened in other local districts and, or communities. And you, you start to see that we could probably put categories of things out, um, and maybe that would be helpful. It's very hard to get to an exact number, but that doesn't mean you couldn't put a number out and say, this is where we would definitely be thinking about closing or something like that. It would depend on circumstance. Um, so we're working on it. That was a huge part of our conversation yesterday. And I left, you know, and I spent a lot of time with my colleagues in the public districts around us too. And, um, I did leave that, you know, one of our local private schools is bringing borders back and I thought, well, at least I'm not responsible overnight. So, um, we're all learning from each other and we've had some nice emails since. And so I'm going to add that to my regular rotation of meetings and, but yes, the thresholds are a real big piece of communication for us to try to put something out to help people feel like there's some predictability.
Right. And in the meantime, it's just good for everybody to know that you are working on those things.
Yeah.
You know, here are the, here's the plan that we're voting on Monday and here are the other things that, you know, are yet to come but haven't been forgotten about. Um, so just to see.
The, to the question on predictability, so for remote days, I think, uh, in grade six through 12 seem very clear insofar as it seems like you'll, for the most part, follow your existing schedule.
Yes.
Um, for the half-days for the elementary schools, when do you think parents might have a firmer sense of what those afternoons will look like? So to Heather's point, things can start planning like childcare or, I don't know, even I know that there's a lot of talk in the community about tutoring and cohorting small kids for tutoring, that kind of thing. So will, will the days be predictable?
Yes, very much so. Um, I spent almost all morning on the elementary schedule, both the in-person and the remote afternoon. And we're really close to done. We're going to just need to share it out among the rest of the teaching staff and probably another week or so, I'd say. We're closing in on it. Yeah. It's going to be very, very predictable. So that, and the good news is we're building it so that it's likely to be predictable in the remote, full remote environment too. So that's been the goal, so one schedule and it, it holds across both settings.
Great. All right. Other questions or issues that people have or, or if not, you know, if you come up with anything, if you think of other things, again, make sure to reach out to one of us or Dr. Hunter before we come back Monday ideally, because Monday we will hopefully take a vote on this.
Yep. And I think just important to say, you know, the vote you're taking is, yes, a vote of endorsement of what's there, but also a vote required by the state. It doesn't mean everything in that plan isn't going to be continually reviewed and, um, effectively monitored and evaluated because that is absolutely best practice in this case. And some of that we won't know till we're in school and find the hotspots that need to be tweaked, so.
And Lori, just for the record, uh, on the, uh, 31st, is it a, a draft goes to the state?
So they, what I submit tomorrow, um, is a very, really all, it's a very simple questionnaire that asks me to explain in-person, hybrid and remote for all three levels. And then I have to send the full document. Um, the commissioners assured us that he's, uh, prioritized his entire staff to be reading and reviewing. So we're glad to hear that and, um, both the form and the full report in the next two weeks.
Great. Thank you.
Lori, have you heard of any schools, any districts that have prioritized, uh, getting, uh, students on campus full-time? Or is everyone looking at hybrid?
Everyone seems to have at least some hybrid going on. Um, certain schools that accepted the three feet have had a little more, you know, it, we, we were able to do it elementary. I've seen a couple of districts that went with the three feet and have been unable to do, do more with the upper grades. Um, but I haven't seen anyone who's fully open a hundred percent. And my colleagues and I are surveying each other all day long, so, not yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we can, well, says anything else anybody wants to add? We can adjourn the region? Saying nothing, I'm going to take a, uh, motion to adjourn the region meeting.
I'm moved.
Second.
Um, any discussion? Do a roll call. Um, Wilson?
Hi.
Mustafi?
Hi.
Out.
Bye.
Ruth? Rainey?
Hi.
Chance tonight. It's all yours, Heather.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Thanks.
Thank you.
And Sarah? You're welcome to stay, but, um, okay. So on to CPS stuff. We have some capital discussions. Lori, I'll let you tee this up.
Yeah, I'll open it. Russ is here to give us his, um, feedback and input. We had, uh, said and committed to the town of Concord that we would review this capital request as part of the rebuild of the budgets and the postponement of town meeting. So I'll just remind you what So I'll just remind you what we had, what we had voted. Doesn't it feel like a lifetime ago when we voted all this? Voted in, I guess, the middle of the winter, a plan to work within the town manager's allocation without heavy focus on energy replacement units at the Alcott and Thoreau specifically. We had also referenced $50,000. That was $690,000, $50,000 for the integrated playground at Thoreau and 20 for increasing a boiler exhaust at Willard, $40,000 for an AC chiller replacement also at Willard, and then the standing $50,000 at each of the two middle school buildings. So the, I think, I do think Town of Concord is hoping we might revise this. We've had some high-level conversation about that and I think asked ourselves some questions that have led to Russ's engagement today. I can start with the easy ones and then we can make our way to the ones that probably need more discussion. The middle school, the $250,000 slots for the middle school need to stay. So let's not, I hope you'll support that. I do think the Thoreau Playground, we have funds available from other sources. So we can get started without that $50,000. And I'll be honest to say that that's not the priority of the moment anyway. So it definitely is a need and a want, especially with those new programs over there. But we have, we have funds to start from PTG and such. So the $50,000 wouldn't make or break that getting going. And then I think we had the boiler extension height of 20,000. I think we feel that can wait. And I know Russ wanted to just talk with you on the AC chiller at Willard and the ERUs. So those would be the two I'd say that are really up for review. I could, we could subtract 70,000 for those two projects, maintain 140 and then debate the 690. And so I maintain 120 and debate the 690 and the 40,000. Did you follow all that? Okay. So Russ, do you want to just talk on the boiler? No, the ERUs and the chiller?
Yep. So the ERUs, I do, I know the last time we met, you know, I said this was something we could hold off. We don't need right away. But it probably would be good if we could have the money for next spring. With the lead time of equipment of these ERUs being 12 weeks, I would recommend that we go ahead and pursue that. I don't know when.
Yeah. Go ahead, Russ.
I mean, I don't know if we don't do it now, when the next time would be that you'd have this opportunity. And where we only have a window to do this project in the summertime, it would be nice if we could, you know, line this all up and plan and just order the equipment and just be able to execute this project next July.
So Russ, I wonder if you might bring it down to a less, less than technical level. What does it quantify what the benefits are and quantify what the costs are for postponing? Could you do so?
Well, there is, there'll just be a lot of maintenance costs. These units are at the end of life. Good example, just two weeks ago, we have the kids camp over there in the kindergarten wing now using that. And we lost a compressor for the air conditioning. So, you know, we had to have a company come in and repair the compressor. And I haven't seen the invoice yet, but that's going to be a few thousand dollars that's going to hit our maintenance budget.
Was that an ice-up situation or a?
A leak. It was a free-on, a free-on leak. Yeah. So they had to find the leak, you know, repair it and then recharge it. And so it's, and we can keep limping along like that too, if we have to. I know there's another unit there, another ERU, the wheel, it's missing some of the fins or so it's not running at, you know, 100% capacity.
So if you were to take a, a mere guess at maintaining it for another year, were the town to be very inclined toward us doing that, what would you want to see in the budget? 150,000, knowing that it would be an unfortunate use of money, but necessary in order to defray doing it right?
It's hard to put a number on it, Court, because those compressors are very expensive. Like the other project we have at the Willard, I think we're, we're putting 50,000 aside in capital for a compressor over there. So yeah, it would probably be a few hundred thousand in the maintenance budget.
So in spite of increasing austerity that we have to point toward, this seems like a responsible thing to do, unfortunately.
I would say it would be. And it's also, there'll be an energy savings as well because these units were not originally designed. They were modified. So now you're going to get a, a unit that's designed with air conditioning and be, it'll be, there's a payback on it.
And a general question, are we in a competitive or non-competitive climate for capital purchases? Any, any big changes in the economy that are driving changes around these kinds of project bidding?
You mean like with contractors and vendors? And I would say it's probably a little more competitive. We've gone out to bid once on these. We could go out again if needed.
Okay. But no huge drama in the industry?
No, it's just, well, the only critical path I think would be is the lead time on equipment. I'm just finding that because of the virus, it's really slowing down supply chains. So I just feel comfortable if we could get this stuff ordered in, you know, February or March or not have to wait to go through another round of getting it approved.
Court, thank you for all those questions. I think it really helped to frame our discussion and thinking here. To me, it comes down to, is this a question of penny wine, penny wise, pound foolish to put it off? And I know last time we talked to Russ, I asked you, you know, does it seem like, even though it would take an investment, now it's more responsible fiscally to do this because of the fact that we could waste more money over the long term? And it seemed like probably yes, to at least do some of them. I know you have more information now. So given all that you just told Court, kind of high-level conclusion, does it feel like it would be, I guess, like Court said, almost irresponsible not to do it because of the extra cost that could come later? Or words in your mouth? Or is it the opposite, you know?
I would say it would be prudent to go ahead and do this now versus just keep throwing maintenance money after this and putting Band-Aids on the units just to limp us along, you know?
Okay. It seemed like that's where it's going. Again, I don't want to pour it in. I just wanted to make sure that's what we're hearing.
Yeah.
And would you start, is this going to be Alcott first?
Yes.
Right. And is it, in some, worse shape is the correct term?
I believe they're older units, yes, at the Alcott, the original.
I just have a memory that either Alcott or Ants or Row were not designed with air conditioning.
Neither of them were.
It was put in after the fact and there were numerous issues around it.
Yeah. So when I say the systems were modified, that's what I mean. The air conditioning was added and after.
Right. So, yep.
And for more context, we've been talking about replacing these ERUs for several years now. And some of them might have gotten done. But so this isn't the first time we've heard they need to be replaced. And we've kicked the can down the road a little bit already.
Yeah.
Starting to get to that feel, that feeling of you better do something about it before it's a problem.
Right.
Think that during the process, the price, I assume you've built in some contingency that it might be less than 690 or no, it's going to be about that.
Yeah, no, I'd have to get with Jared and Ian. I, I don't know off the top of my head what the bids.
Thanks.
Russ, there is an economy of scale here. So the more we do, the less we'll spend. Is that generally true?
Yes, that is correct. And it's, it would make sense to do all of them, you know, just because of, this is going to be crane work, so mobilization fees and things like that. It would not be cost-effective just to have it one replaced at a time or, so.
That was one of my questions initially was could we just lower the number and stage it out more? But it fiscally doesn't really make sense to do that.
Right.
So I'm a little confused. So we have 690 and FY21, right? And then 680. So 690, both Thoreau and Alcott?
I think it's mostly Alcott. Yeah. I, we, the way that it's written there, it didn't break them out individually. But I think the goal is essentially to do Alcott and then essentially to do Thoreau.
And FY22.
Yeah. Now, of course, we're about to enter 22. So because 21 is running so late, we could, in theory, do both next year if we left the number. Yeah.
Yeah, but then you've got a problem getting the commitment before they've got to be ordered.
Well, that's the FY22 problem, yes. I said in theory.
Okay. You know, I know nobody wants to think about this, but we don't know that we're not going to have some issues around COVID next fall. Would be nice to get HVAC systems. Just enough, just in case we still have issues. I think if we had known this was coming, we would have argued that we should have gotten these fixed a while ago. I think it makes sense to move forward on it.
I don't, I don't know if everybody is satisfied on this one. If so, tell us about the AC chiller, if you'd be so kind, Russ.
And so the AC chiller at the Willard School, there's two of them. And, and they're basically chiller, or I call them compressors too. But two chillers handle the whole school. Right now, we have lost one chiller. It's just been deemed that it needs to be replaced. So we basically do not have any redundancy there. If we lose the other chiller, it's going to, the building will be without air conditioning.
And is the 40K for one chiller or two?
For one chiller.
So I think we could follow on Wally's comment of a minute ago and say, we do need the redundancy as much now as we ever did. I, I would say before our coffers are threatened further in the town, we do the responsible stewardship of these buildings and keep that number in here. Would be my sentiment.
I would agree.
Russ, is this a repair that can be done during the school year or no?
Yes, this can be done during the school year. You know, after air conditioning season, it can, yeah, this nice fall project or October, November or early spring.
Good. It'd be a good place for the spring.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Thanks.
So I missed this one. We first started talking about this. Are we taking the boiler exhaust increase off this or are we leaving it on?
I was going to suggest you could take it off, but you can revisit that if you'd like. It's, it's not feeling as urgent. It's been that way for Willard's entire life. It's a matter of having to make sure the door management happens and such so that the exhaust isn't going into the building. It's not an unsafe situation, but it's inconvenient for sure.
You know, on that issue there, the wind has to be blowing just the right way. And it's, you know, some days it's a problem and some days it's not. So.
Design flaw that happened, yeah.
Is it, does the door have to be open for it to come in?
No, the, the issue there that the stack, the boiler stack or chimney or it's, it's too low. They didn't want to see it from the street. So it needs to be extended. So I've had one company come out and take a look at it. They were going to do some engineer, do an engineer and estimate for me.
Can't just go up there and put a piece of pipe on?
Right, right. Yeah. And it's funny because they got four boilers tied into this and two hot water heaters. And it's, yeah, it's, you know, it was undersized where it shouldn't have been. So. It's not an issue though. It's something if, if you have to hold off on something, I concur with Lori. That's probably something we can hold off on. It's been like this or.
Keep it on our list of as soon as possible to add it back on next.
Yeah. It's good to keep on like a five-year plan or something. Absolutely.
Okay.
It sounds like we're headed to reducing this by $70,000.
Yeah. So you don't, I didn't, we don't have a vote on the agenda. We can add that on Monday. There is some convenience to all these meetings because we're never too far away from another one. So I thought we'd start the discussion and then vote Monday as we like to do. So you're not deciding the same day.
Yep. I agree. I think that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I wasn't intending that we thought of it. If we were to have to get this number down some more, how would we do it?
Russ can pipe. I mean, really, the only place you have to go is the ERUs. And I think then you, this would be a fiscal strategy more than the change of need that you then want to look at what we put in for FY22 and how we approach that plan because the need is still there. So there, I think if you had to lower it, you'd end up with a three-year ERU project instead of a two-year ERU project most likely, which as we just said, is maybe not as cost-effective.
And I'd like to hope we have reasonable odds of not expending the, the 100K at the middle school, but something considerably less.
Yeah, of course.
Because we've got a lot of preventive maintenance attention happening with Russ's crews at both buildings.
Yep.
We might get lucky.
Yep.
I just wanted to make sure we've thought about that before we get to town meeting.
Yeah, good point.
And I think also to be able to explain what the future cost is of doing that. If we cut it in half now, we as a town will be paying more as a result because of the fact that we lose the economies of scale. We should have an idea before we get there of what those costs are, you know, presumably under some, let's say slashed model.
Russ, is the chiller one of those things that if you lose it, you can bring in a piece of equipment and attach and recreate the capability temporarily?
Yep, that's a possibility. And it's, it's good too because it's outside, it's on the loading dock. It's, that is a viable option if we had to do that.
We, Wally, we did, we did that at the Ripley School once when Steve Martin rented the Ripley School. True story, Russ. Rented the Ripley School, but then refused to use it unless it was air-conditioned. And so we brought in a unit and parked it in the back.
Yeah.
That's Steve Martin, wild and crazy guy?
Yes. Goldie Hawn as well.
Of course.
This was a while ago.
Host center.
I think Goldie Hawn's been 30 years.
They left it here.
Wow.
I don't think we charged them enough either. I don't think we charged them enough either.
We don't seem to and it's like Hollywood shows up, it's like, oh, just, just, you can just use it.
All right. So does that give you the, as much as you need right now, Laurie, really, it's a matter of tabling it until next week when we vote, but.
Yes.
Is everybody comfortable with where we are? Okay, good. Then Russ, thank you so much for being here and that insight.
Anytime. Have a great night, everyone.
You too. Okay, so one more item, a discussion of one-to-one technology K5. So Laurie, can you give us a little more update here? And we have Peter Kelly joining.
Peter's here too.
Welcome.
Yeah, Jared goes out of town. I just bring others with me. I referenced the other day that we were really studying our needs at K5 for technology. In a normal time, we are well resourced and just getting, you know, working on the replacement cycle. This spring, as kids were working remotely, we did essentially rely on families to have accessibility. And we surveyed and made sure that those who didn't either had internet access or we loaned them laptops. And Peter, how many laptops do you think we loaned K5?
Boy, 40, 50?
Yeah, that's about right, I think. Over time, it happened gradually. But in really looking at, you know, where we're going here, now that we've got a plan that includes half a day of remote and the potential to be fully remote again, and very clear messages coming from the state that devices should be part of this reopening plan. We've been reviewing what we have in inventory. We've been considering the options and wanted to bring those to you. We, good news, the good news is we do have money budgeted. So assuming our budgets go forward as we've budgeted for them, and these are in the draft budgets that you're reviewing even from this week. We've, we have 60,000 allocated each elementary school. So we've been trying to use that as the, the marker and not have to go into the COVID money and also strategize the, the choices in terms of are we trying, do we try to stay on the replacement cycle and make this part of the long-term plan? Are we in more of a, an emergency Band-Aid kind of mode? So we're, we're actually going to give you some of these options to look at. And then we did price out just flat out buying all new machines for all students K5, which will, you'll get a little sticker shock when I put the number up here in a minute. But so Peter's here to talk through, I think, where we are at. I think we're mostly just wanting to keep you informed of the options. We don't really, we, we probably need a verbal blessing on the money since we're looking at spending from a budget that's not formally approved. I'm sort of saying this and thinking out loud as I say it because it's so strange not to have a budget at this time of the year. So let me show you where we are with options. And then Peter can, I think, take, take it from there. Peter, do you mind going through?
Yeah.
This overview?
It makes sense to drop down just the elementary one-to-one proposal. Got to thank Sue Howard and the instructional technologists at the elementary schools for going through our inventory. And with what we have there, you're looking at filling in two grade levels and making them one-to-one. You can see that there's four and five is listed there. And this is a general framework. And kindergarten could make do with the iPads we have in the district, but we have that hole to backfill for the rest of the school, the students in the school. And it comes out to about 720 devices. So if you look back up at the numbers where we're, Laurie slides that back up, I mean, these are the costs, right? So per cost, if you go a little higher, Laurie, on the top, there we go. When you're looking at Chromebooks, you're paying for, everything needs $265 a unit. That gets us well within our current budget lines for the three elementary schools, if you wanted to make that change. If you took our current budget line annually and tried to buy the MacBook Airs, you can see you're not going to fill up. You've got 720 units versus 185 units, and that's not going to make up the difference. So when you look at it from that standpoint, the choice seems pretty clear. We reached out to Apple on the finance side today. And we have financed with Apple before. And the numbers that came back today are pretty interesting. If you look at the four-year lease option that they sent, and it's 1.29 APR, that four-year lease option comes under our annual budget for the three elementary schools on the hardware line. And if you think in terms of you're making an upfront purchase of those units, that if you bought them annually every year over the next four years, you would end up with maybe a handful more. But this number that came today is, is interesting. It fits the budget. It keeps things intact as far as the program that we're running with Apple. We have the secondary piece, this is Laurie said, assuming the budget's approved, we can purchase for the middle school what we would normally purchase for them this year. The eighth grade, the rising in the eighth graders who still have their laptops, we'll get those back. And the goal would be to put those down to the elementary school as many as possible. We're confident 180 plus or minus could get down there. And if we get that many out of the middle school to recycle down to the elementary, we can then take the iPads out of consideration. You can align grades three, four and five with MacBook Airs. And then the lower level can either be, just depending on the decision, they would be Chromebooks. Or if you go with the lease route, which is the only way you'll make the Apple work is go with the lease route, then you'd get the whole school on the MacBook Airs. So there's really, I mean, there really are only two options to make this work quickly. The other consideration is not just cost, but availability. We won't see a Chromebook until close to October. Everywhere we've talked to all the reps, they're saying you're not going to see anything. Late September shipping, early October. If you did the Apple lease, you'd have them out of the warehouse in one to two weeks. So you would hit the ground running when school started and have equipment in hand. Otherwise, you got to delay.
So I guess, let me just frame sort of where, where the questions lie. And we can talk big picture technology plan. That's not what this was, that's not what this is, right? This is crisis boat. We are not normally one-to-one K5 by design because we don't, we don't have kids on computers all day long and they're not taking them home and all of that. We've been trying to build a robust replacement plan. We've done that really effectively at middle and high school now. And this was the last stage when we're just getting accelerated on it because of the COVID crisis. The question really is, and you know, Peter and I have very strong opinions about this and you hired us both knowing what they were. So I think we're okay to voice them. You know, we're not Chromebook fans. We see a lot of districts do them because that's what they can afford. The Apples, Peter, how many years are we getting out of the Apple machines?
We still have 2011, 2012s in service in the district.
Yeah. So they're, they're serving us very well. I actually thought like the lease option that, you know, is really the only Apple option that's available to us given cost. We, that's happened, you know, since two o'clock this afternoon essentially. So I really thought we were coming here to say, you know, sometimes you've got to do what you can and we'd have to consider Chromebooks. So it's interesting to be at a place where maybe that's not necessarily the case. And we're, you know, doing so well with the Apples and what they can offer us. So I think to some extent, we're looking for permission to consider going this direction with the one-to-one. And then feedback on the device for sure.
And you can also consider that in the elementary schools, they have our largest contingent of older laptops.
They do.
That, you know, part of the discussion Laurie and I were working into this year was establishing what the program would look like for them going forward. If you did this one larger purchase on the lease and we get back to normal, we're all back in school full-time, that is really sort of an upfront catch-up purchase you could look at where we could retire some of those older devices out of the school and get back on track. And that would lead into potentially whatever decisions are made on the program for the elementary school that gets us caught up in a good place to launch from as well.
Right.
So the idea would be that after the, this year where we're remote, you'd continue to obviously go on this four-year lease and those laptops would migrate back up to the six through 12 use.
Are you referring to the, the eighth grade ones that were going to come down?
No, like I'm saying, so if, if you lease 725 MacBooks.
Yes.
And it's a four-year lease. The idea is that you'd have one-to-one usage for K5 for this year. And so then in years two, three and four, those MacBooks, where do they go?
Well, I think one of the benefits of this would, we've, as we discussed before, then we've been behind on our replacement cycle in the elementary school. This in essence would give us one big boost where we could catch up and eliminate some of the really old devices that should be retired.
Right.
And at the end of those four years of this lease option, during that timeframe, we'll figure out, I mean, Laurie's going to guide us on what the best look for the elementary and technology it is. But it allows us to catch up very quickly. And at the end of those four years, we're in pretty good shape. We don't have that gap that we have right now that we're looking at.
Yeah, it, it is, we do need a plan to get those old machines offline and that this would allow us to do that.
You'd all worried about like five-year-olds with a expensive device like that? Like, are we worried about them getting freaking trashed?
Well, we, we buy Apple Care and yeah, to be sure, we thought. I, in my previous district, we did ask parents to buy insurance and
Okay.
We haven't had that conversation here. We might if we're going to hand it out.
All right.
Yeah. No, it's valid, Alexa.
So these numbers are with Apple Care for three years?
Yes.
For three out of the four years. And are we assuming that we would expect every student to accept one of these? Do parents, families opt out and use their own devices? What, what happens there?
So there's two ways to approach it. One, one is you can just put it out and ask the families who need the device if they want it and then let people use what they're using. Or do we prioritize it? And this is where I was leaning, which is why we've priced it the way we have. Or do we prioritize it that we get a lot of benefit from every, every student being on the same device? I know the technology specialists have a very strong opinion about that, having now tried to support essentially a bring your own option for the last four months. So that, you're right, those are the choices. You could probably lower this number if we made it a question of what's your level of need rather than everybody getting one.
Yeah, well, I, I, I think the, the efficiency argument with consistent use, consistent machines is inescapable.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it is.
It's hard to have a telephone conversation with a mom or a dad or a child about making your device work if we don't have a compatible device in front of us at the same time.
Yes.
Laurie, as much as I appreciate the need here, I would like to see an iPad approach. I, I don't think the community can support this huge number, especially when we know 22, 23 fiscal years could be very brutal. And once you lock into a lease, we can't, we can't decide, no, we're not going to do it anymore. I work in a district where we're one-to-one, just five, six, seven with iPads, and it's very successful with keyboards. And it's at least a third to a quarter of the price.
And are they a little more durable against lemonade and drops?
Yes. With the proper cases, we have very rigorous cases.
That'd be a big, big ship for us.
I, I just, this number is, I don't think.
Is that same lease option available for you?
Yes.
Yes, no, we could get numbers on that as well.
Geez, how much would it change, do you think?
Well, hard to say. She was trying to lower, my rep is trying to lower our pricing a little bit, but it won't be significant based on our volume. So I certainly get another quote turned down pretty quickly.
That's a question. I mean, these, these are, I mean, the thing that's intriguing to me about this, we solve the immediate problem, but we end up in sort of the same replacement cycle we had planned. Is there a etymological difference between the Airs and the, and the iPads in our, in our estimation as a district?
They're different with, yeah.
Yes, yes. We, we were definitely looking to be a laptop-oriented upper elementary program with iPads at the lower elementary. And the more tools that we've been bringing, that's been the mindset. You know, and I look at the, the software we've just secured for this coming year, I, I do think it would have impact. Cynthia's right, I'm sure we could make things work, but we had gone into things expecting laptops. But you know, we've thrown Chromebooks on the table here today too. So we're, we're in this, what do you do immediately versus the long-term? And do you try to meet both needs at once or not? I guess that's part of the, part of the strategy.
Well, speak a little more about that, Laurie and Peter. The, the user experience is different. But if the actual interface is all web-based, does the iPad drop out any functional utility of specific software applications?
Well, certainly there are different software packages. We'd have to look at the curriculum side and what's ordered and, you know, a compatible, if, if they've got a compatible iOS software for it. So that requires us going back to look at that. As Laurie said, a lot of decisions, they allow the software we looked at were being expected to be run on laptops.
Yeah, okay. So we, so that question remains open. What would we either put in jeopardy or, or force out, squeeze out of the, the plans if we were to go to iPads at a given grade level?
Yeah, I think technology has become very much more, as it should be, a curriculum question as opposed to just a hardware question like it may have been when we first started rolling out hardware into the buildings. And as curriculum's been integrated, Laurie can certainly speak to it. Then you start to make decisions that the device does impact.
So as we've talked about, in terms of platforms, three to five will be on Google Classroom, but K2 will be on Seesaw. So I guess the first question would be that if we were to look at iPads K2, does it affect use, usage and user experience in Seesaw? And then to Court's point, what else does it affect, right? I mean, I think I'm just putting these on our list of questions that we would need to look into.
I think, I think that's a very necessary piece of homework. Sorry, Peter.
Everything's kind of real time at this point.
Yeah.
Indeed, indeed. What about the strategy of having the fifth graders on MacBook Airs to ease the transition to sixth grade? Because I like to see their fifth and sixth on that, you know what I'm saying? Because you have that big transition year. So, you know, we try to have a, in our schools, so the fifth and sixth graders are on the same platform and then we move them up as they get into the older years of middle school. So I think having a consistent device in fifth and sixth grade would be helpful in that transition. So, so that's a, that's an option. You know, we use iPads, but I can see having fifth graders have the same device as they're going to get in sixth grade might be helpful.
Yeah, we do have the current inventory in the buildings and the laptop carts so that right now you could have fourth and fifth grade on those existing laptops. So you're looking to backfill below that with what you need.
Okay.
Can I back up to the, some of the numbers again for a minute? Initially, it was Chromebooks versus MacBooks. And so now I guess it's comparing the three of them to some extent, but with the information that we have, the Chromebooks, that budget number of 190,000 is a one time. If we look at the lease, the 175 a year fits into our budget. But we're paying it four times, right?
Correct.
So we are paying more overall. So I guess, and I'm just kind of laying this out for a comparison point. The downside is we're paying more all, more overall. The upside is we end up with techno, or we end up with hardware that fits into our etymological strategy already as well as things to start to feed into that replacement cycle, right? So to help us with that catch-up. So if we went for the high, I'm not going to say MacBooks versus Chromebooks. So MacBooks versus either Chromebacks or Chromebooks or iPads, it, you're somewhat, you're balancing those by the fact that you're feeding into your future replacement cycle. And so for those, let's say, years three and four, future years, when you're paying, when you maybe wouldn't have been for Chromebooks, is it fair to say we're not paying completely incremental there because it's something we would have had to put into other devices anyway? And now these devices are becoming the catch-up. And now these devices are becoming the catch-up ones? So I guess I'm trying to define, are years two through four actually incremental? Or are they just money that we would spend anyway and we're spending it in a different way?
Well, I think that makes sense, right? Assuming you've got the same budget lines for hardware in the elementary schools, you're going to spend that annually on new hardware. That line covers both staff and students going forward. So if that line stays the same, then yeah, you've, you've gotten the asset in year one. You're paying year two, three, and four for that asset. But you'd have purchased new assets in year two, three, and four regardless.
Okay. So basically, it's obvious that we're purchasing now what we maybe would have purchased in years three or four, but we're getting it now to use with the younger kids.
Correct.
You know, I mean, I hear, it would be interesting to see what the iPads look like, but I, and I hear Cynthia's concern. I don't know that hardware is the place to try to save money in the event things are so bad. We're looking, you know, we would have wished we hadn't spent an extra 50 or 60 grand a year. You know, this is a pretty integral part of the program delivery. And I think if we as a district have made the choice that Airs are better than, than iPads or work better for what we're trying to do, I would hate to see us, I don't think we should impose a pedagogical decision on the district because we're, we're anticipating a budget shortfall over the next two or three years. It's going to be probably a, you know, not a significant difference between iPads and and MacBook Airs. I think you'd have, I would, I would want to look somewhere else for the savings.
I respectfully disagree with you, Wally. So let's get the numbers. Let's take a look. I do think that if I had to, $175,000 is a teacher plus. And I'm, I'm just afraid of 22 and 23 looking very bleak, especially what we just heard today about the economic conditions in our country. So I would just like to try to be as cautious and conservative as we can everywhere that we can be. And I don't think there's a significant pedagogical loss with a Mac, with a iPad.
My question though would be, so now you'll have 720 iPads that then can't, or maybe they can, but are not the same technology that the upper grades who already have the one-to-one technology have. So then we would essentially, if we are not doing remote learning in the future, we would have an excess of 720 iPads that don't really have a place to live or, or be utilized. Is that a fair statement? Well, I think those are the questions we probably need to go back and, I mean, this is, literally, we got the lease information at two o'clock. So we've had zero, I mean, literally, I'm doing this five minutes before the meeting because Peter texted me the information. So we haven't had time to have any internal dialogue. And I think the iPads is a fair question to put on the discussion table. So let us take between now and Monday and get you another round of information so we can talk through all of the options. I mean, Alexa, they wouldn't go to waste. They certainly wouldn't. It may shift, may shift a little of what we were strategizing. Is it a big shift? I can't say without a little bit of time to, to talk about it.
I hope that the, the conversation includes the question of, of why parents who could opt for a Mac Air end up providing their younger children with, with iPads instead. And I would hope we could hear from some of the early elementary folks and the K through two folks in this regard. But I think a critical question is the one you brought up already. If we are reliant on Seesaw, if we already know that, then how does that perform on the iPad? That's, to me, a basic question.
We used iPads all through remote learning and used Seesaw anecdotally. I can say it worked great.
I would expect it would.
Yeah, I wouldn't have concerns about Seesaw on the other devices.
Well, that's good news. That, then that means it is a viable option that we've got to look very carefully at.
So I guess I'll just preface all the work we're going to do by saying, you know, we aren't going to have time to build you what we would wish we could have, which was some master technology plan and all the pedagogy that goes with it and all of that. We'll do what we can in a couple of days to bring you solid information for where we're at.
So Peter and Lori, would it be accurate to say that your, your objective for next year is to make the shifting sands of where a child is going to be on a given day or month at least seamless on the technology side? If, if it's not seamless in terms of where, where they park themselves in the morning?
Yeah, and seamless for families because it's become clear we've just sent out a plan that includes remote learning for all kids at the same time. And I think we have to be part of the solution to that. So making sure the accessibility doesn't become a family issue.
Now, one thing that didn't get said, or I, I missed it, so my, my apologies. The, the lease here is lease, not lease-to-purchase.
It is lease-to-purchase, Court.
Okay, good. All right. So we ought to call that out specifically when, when, when we make this known to the public, whatever we're going to do.
It's a $1 purchase option at the end of the finance period.
Traditional, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's $725 you could save.
Yeah.
And lighten it up a little.
Great.
So Lori, some, maybe some back, I mean, quick math on K3 iPads versus four or five MacBook Airs or something?
Yeah, that's what we'll do. We'll get Apple to give us numbers on the iPads and we'll play around with the allocation to different grade levels and make a suggestion to you as to what technology fits best where and revisit it on Monday.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
No, good suggestion to do the homework.
You feel like you have what you need from us in terms of guidance on what to collect and questions?
I do. I just want to, you know, just make sure your expectations are in line with the fact it's Thursday and that's coming Monday. We'll do our best. Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, you know, time is critical here too, so.
It is, it is.
You know, I'm not, you know, I, I think we need to be careful as a committee to, you know, not create a problem getting things in the hands of the people that need them for school opening.
It's a large amount of money. So I think we need to do.
I understand, but I.
Peter, were you planning on being in tomorrow?
Absolutely.
If, if not, we just changed it for you.
Okay, I'll have my Apple rep on the phone after we get off the meeting here. Right on it.
Well, thanks to you and your team for, for being, what, in a big hurry to work this out, but being patient with the school committee. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
That was a, that was a great dialogue. I mean, we're doing this quick and we should do it thoughtfully and quickly at the same time.
At the same time. A little hurry up and wait and hurry up again.
That's your bumper sticker.
The benefit of meeting twice a week is that it can roll a meeting and not have.
No, 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 we're not.
I know. I was naming you, Wally, so you would have fun about meeting twice a week.
You can't even get the agendas done in time.
No, right, yeah. All right, thank you. That's a good discussion. Peter, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Appreciate it.
Much appreciated. And everybody else, unless, is there anything else before we join?
No, that's it for today.
Okay, then I would take a motion to adjourn.
Alloft.
Second, second, Cynthia, you said, thank you. Then by roll call, Rainy?
Aye.
Johnston? Booth?
Aye.
And about I. Thank you all. We'll see you shortly on Monday.
Bye.
Bye.
You don't want to meet over the weekend?
Yeah, yeah. Bye.